Excellent. Good morning. Welcome to our Neighborhood Housing and Development Committee meeting. Thank you all for joining us here today. It will be a diverse and productive meeting and covering a lot of territory. We'll start with our meeting minutes. Have any of my colleagues had a chance to review the meeting minutes?
I have read them. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next in our agenda is the homeless initiative update. We are working very hard to make progress on this important issue and a lot of work has been done to move us forward. So I encourage everyone to review the package of information, which is available online if you don't have it here with you. We do not have any cards on this item, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Item four through six are recommended for consent and no presentations are planned, but we do have staff available for questions. Would entertain a motion on items four through six.
If we could pull number four.
All right.
I'm just gonna vote against that.
Number four is the Arizona Forward Membership Dues. So we will pull that for separate consideration. And then items would... Four and five are historic preservation. We have a motion on items... I'm sorry. Items five and six are historic preservation. Farmers &amp; Stockman's Bank.
I move approval of items five and six.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are back to item four, the Arizona Forward Annual Membership Dues. I'm getting confused with all these things. Shall we... Would you like to have a little bit of...
No, it's just part of the membership dues issues that I've had at the city, whether or not we should be doing that in the middle of crisis. We've got other issues to deal with.
All right.
Oh, okay.
That was perfect.
Well, that was fine. Okay, it's perfect. It's fine. You can make a motion.
Do we have someone available to speak on the work that Arizona Forward is doing?
Yes. Chairman Gago, we have Ginger Spencer with us today who can speak to that issue.
Chairwoman Gago and members of the subcommittee, we are here to request approval for our membership dues with Arizona Forward. And the City of Phoenix has actually been a member of Arizona Forward since 1990 and we've been a visionary member since 2007. We are active participants. The city participates in the annual environmental awards each year, which we've been very successful in winning Chris Gordy Awards over the past few years. And it just helps us with our sustainability efforts as a city. So I also have Diane Brosart here, who is the Executive Director of Arizona Forward. And she can also talk about what we do.
We very much value the City of Phoenix's partnership with Arizona Forward and before it, Valley Forward for the past almost 25 years. And the issues that we look at are things like land use planning in open space, water management, transportation issues, environmental education and energy, all of the issues that face growing population centers. And I think the strength of our organization is really the public-private partnerships that we're able to forge in that companies, both large and small, join and along with many municipalities and government agencies. And being able to move the needle on sustainability issues together is a whole lot more effective than any one sector trying to do it alone. So we very much hope that the City of Phoenix will continue its partnership with us. And I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
And I'd also like to add that we're not using any general purpose funds for this membership. The membership, the $28,900, is paid from aviation, water, wastewater, solid waste through public works and public transit funds.
The City of Phoenix also has a seat on our Board of Directors and Ginger has been our representative. We don't want to lose her. She's been great.
I certainly appreciate one of our areas where we're really trying to invest is along the Grand Canal in district aid and trying to make that a safer and stronger community asset. So I appreciate your help on canal work because I think we do have some crime and some issues that... But with investments in infrastructure, we can, including things like lighting and getting more people actively using them, we can help us create a safer city. Do any of my colleagues have questions?
Just a comment. I couldn't have asked for a better person, representative from City of Phoenix than Ginger, sitting on your board. So Ginger, thank you for representing all of us there. And this is obviously incredibly important, not only for the City of Phoenix, but all of our partners throughout the state. Gives us a chance and that platform and opportunity to learn best practices, to work with our neighbors and, you know, to do it with public-private partnership, just as you mentioned. I think this is money well-spent when you consider all of the benefits that come from it. It's an investment. It's not just an expense. And the City of Phoenix is a world-class city. It is... It's a leader and we have to behave like a leader. And we have to lead by example. And again, it's not just an expense, it's an investment. So with that, unless there are more comments, I will move approval.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Passes three to one. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we are moving on to item seven, blight liens. This is a longtime issue of interest for me. I have many constituents who have approached us and said, "There's a fire. The house burnt down. It's still standing. What are you doing, City of Phoenix?" Or others, long-term abandoned property, where they've said, "Could you get this back into the public domain?" Or had concerns about structures remaining standing after abatement. And this is also an opportunity where we may be able to recover some revenue from the city, for the city, while moving forward and cleaning up our neighborhoods. So I think when we have win-wins in the budget process, that is good news and something we ought to study further and see if we can't invest in our community, get some revenue and help clean up. So appreciate staff's work on this. Would you introduce our panel here today?
Yes. Councilwoman Gago and members of the subcommittee, Chris Howlett, who is our Neighborhood Services Director, will introduce who's with him at the table today. And they will be presenting a presentation on blight liens.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. We are here as a result of requests to come, exactly what you said, provide an educational update on our blight lien process. I have with me Tim Bowling, our Deputy Director over Neighborhood Preservation Division that's responsible for overall code enforcement and the abatement process, which leads to these blight liens. Additionally, we have Patty Boland from the Law Department to represent us in that area as well. And we have Chief Financial Officer Neil Young from the Finance Department, who's integral to the process of ultimately issuing the blight liens on the properties that we abate. So I'm gonna kick it over to Tim Bowling. He's closest to the process, knows it in and out. He's gonna go over the history and some of the basis of the process itself.
Thanks, Chris. Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, the Neighborhood Services Department protects neighborhoods from blighting and deteriorating conditions. And quite often, that's open vacant structures, vacant properties with high vegetation, trash that accumulate on it. And if you live next door to one of those, you sure know that it's a blighting influence in your neighborhood. We have an abatement team that works, just one team that works on abatement projects. We have seven inspectors. They're specialized training in that area. These inspectors are the seasoned inspectors. They've been around and they've been familiar with the types of cases that we deal with and the type of issues that abatement prop cases bring into neighborhoods. They also testify in court on blight abatement when we need to get court order to do an abatement on a property, whether it's occupied or vacant. And then they also testify at the Appeal Board hearings, which is the process for abatement properties. And frequently, they collaborate with police because a lot of the vacant properties have some criminal activity that occurs there as well. When we get a complaint for an open vacant property, we have an immediate response on that. On our regular enforcement cases, we send a notification letter letting them know that we've received a complaint. But on open vacant properties or vacant properties, it's an immediate response. As soon as we get a complaint, we go out and we verify that the violations are there. Then we request a title report. And the title search, right now, is taking an average of about 11 days. And we're looking at exploring some options to shorten that timeframe a little bit. But the title report gives us all the information on anybody that has a financial interest in the property, the listed property owner, as well as any of the mortgage holders, or anybody else who has a lien on the property. Often, it's CP buyers that have tax liens on the properties as well. We issue a 35-day notice of ordinance violation for any of the violations that exist. State statute requires a minimum of 30-day notice. We add five days for the mailing process to take place. And we always try to seek out abatement by the owner. That's... We have a limited amount of funds that pay for abatement. And so we work really hard to work with the owner to get compliance. Now, we take into consideration the severity of the violations on the property as well. If it's high vegetation and trash, we try to work with the owners as much as we possibly can to get them to take care of it so that we are conserving our resources as much as possible. But oftentimes, we have to hire a contractor and then perform the work. When we do not have a response or the property owner refuses to take responsibility for the conditions of the property, we send a scope of work to the contractor to go out and correct the violations. One of the process improvements that we put in place this year is we do, we have an on-call service contract with the contractors to go out and perform the work. The inspector provides a scope of work. We call them and they go out and perform the work. We worked with Finance Department to create that contract this year. That cut out anywhere from seven to 15 days because we used to individually bid every single property out. So now we don't have to bid each property. We just prepare the scope of work. Contractor performs the work, sends us the invoice. Inspector verifies that the work is actually completed. And then we pay the contractor. The funding that we use for abatement is community development block grant funds and general funds. It's about 50/50. And when that money is paid off, the lien is paid off, it goes back into those funds. Just a quick example of an open vacant property, they usually come with trash, vegetation, open openings on a property. So you get the full scope. This is what it looks like before. And then this is what a board-up property looks like. State statute kind of governs, gives us the authority to perform this activity. It does require a minimum 30-day notice and it gives the authority specifically to a city or town to abate the violations and assess the properties, including abatement costs, inspections, and any other incidental costs that we have that occur. It also makes the assessments priority over all other liens except tax liens. Now, this is an Arizona state statute. Most other states do not have that. Most of those liens are a much lower priority and cities and towns have a very difficult time recovering those costs. Ours, though, is a priority lien over all other liens, except for general taxes. So that is kind of a unique situation that we have here in Arizona. It also gives the city or town the authority to bring action to enforce assessments in Superior Court if necessary. The process, it's a general assessment. The invoices are recorded. They include the contractor's expenses. And that can be anywhere from $200 to $600 to clean a vacant lot, for example. A board-ups are usually up where around $1,000 to $1,200 for a standard house board-up. Monitoring fees, and they vary. These are set by finance years ago. And it takes in consideration the number of inspections necessary. It's, you know, see, it goes up from a lot cleaning to a board-up and demolition is more expensive. And then the recording fee is $14 and we add that on there, too. The assessment letters and the billing statements are sent to the property owners. Now, for the liens, they're unpaid until it comes up on a title search. They're paid in full or they become invalid due to tax foreclosure. If somebody does foreclose on a property due to tax liens, then we lose our lien. That money just gets wiped away. They get exposed during a title transaction. So if this property is sold, it's always exposed at that point. It kind of clouds the title. And then after the first 12 months, the city tax on interest at 10% per year. And then once a lien is paid, we receive a copy of that and we release the lien. Just over the last complete fiscal year, we have over 68,000 cases were opened in preservation. Just under 2,000 of those were abatement cases. And less than half of those were ones where staff had to hire a contractor and put a lien on a property, 825 of those. And all of our cases that we have in preservation, all of the types of violations that we receive, we have a 93% of voluntary complaints. Just the number of cases we had out of those 825, this is how they were spread across the City of Phoenix. We have, like I mentioned, seven inspectors that are assigned to do just abatement. One of those does the more egregious cases, the demolitions and the court-ordered abatement types of things. But out of the other six, five of those are assigned south of Northern Avenue. So they're assigned, similar to how Police Department assigns officers based on calls for service, we assign inspectors based on where we receive the most complaints, where we have the most activity. And you can see 619 of the cases that we had were board-ups. That's the majority of the types of cases that we run into. Lean history, we just took a snapshot from January 2008 to December 2013, 3,702 are the number of liens that we have recorded. Over 1,500 of those were paid. The lien value of that was over $2.7 million. The amount of money that we received was actually a little over $3.2 million. That's the interest that was added on to it. And out of the unpaid liens, that's a little over $4 million. Over the summer, we are gonna receive input from the community on some changes to our Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance, which Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance, Phoenix City Code, Chapter 39, that addresses open vacant violations and blight in neighborhoods. These are the meetings that we have scheduled. There'll be five total meetings. One will be in Spanish. And they're across the city, north, south, east and west, so we'll receive some input. And some of the things that we'll be looking at is, for example, our board-up specifications. Right now, you're allowed to board up property with 3/4-inch plywood. And one of the things we're looking into is kind of a plexiglass material, which from the front of the property, if you drive by, you can't really tell it's a boarded-up structure. But it's a lot more aesthetically pleasing to the eye if you live in that community. And with that, we turn it over to request guidance and direction from the subcommittee or answer any questions that you may have.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that information. And I would encourage everyone interested to attend some of those public meetings. Could we show people a picture of what the board-up looks like with the plexiglass?
Sure. We have...
Something...
That right there is the before and after. You see, the one on the left is boarded up with plywood. And plywood also invites some graffiti from time to time. So it... That's what it looks like. The one on the right is, it's secured. It's a plexiglass. We actually threw a brick at the glass on that one and the brick just bounced right off. It's very durable. If you're driving down the road, I, Chris and I were actually driving down the road and I asked him, "Go ahead and pick out the one that's boarded up." And we drove right past it twice and didn't realize that that was the one that was boarded up. So it makes a big difference as far as what it looks like in a neighborhood. But that's the... And that's what we're looking to change, the ordinance, to require the plexiglass on the front openings of structures, what's visible to the community.
And this is something I think will be very good news for the community. I think it will be much less attractive to people who are looking for targets for graffiti or vandalism or a place to break into because it really, from the street, you have to be looking. And so I hope this is something that the community and council will be excited about because I think it will be very good news. We have two cards on this agenda item. One from Lori Fitzhugh, who was not able to attend, but wrote that, "What I want to discuss and elaborate on is the practice of deed transfers by quitclaim deeds and how the use of the type of deed has expanded and evolved since the mortgage crisis. Quitclaim deeds often transfer the title outside of a formal escrow closing. Property liens may not be recognized during a quitclaim deed transfer. They were formerly used to transfer real estate between family members or closely associated persons. Via statutory changes regarding who qualifies for a waiver regarding the filing of the Arizona Department of Revenue affidavit of value, the use of quitclaim deeds in both residential and commercial real estate transactions has greatly expanded. Properties under trust sale are being transferred by quitclaim deed." So this is... Do... Does staff want to talk about if we think we are losing out on revenue because of this change or if this is an issue?
I... Oh, sorry. Yes, Madam Chair, Patty Boland with the Law Department. I understand that's a problem, but I have not heard that we are losing money because of the increased use of quitclaim deeds.
Okay. Does anyone have information on this? Okay. All right. Well, this is something we can try to find out more information on. We have a card from Mark Manoyle. Would you... I think at the microphone since we're recording so that the public can hear.
Good morning, Your Honors. At least, that's how I'm used to addressing governmental bodies, Councilmen, Councilwomen. I'm a lawyer in private practice and I actually foreclose property tax liens quite a bit. And that's what's led to my interest in this subject. And as a longtime resident and actually a native of City of Phoenix, I'm concerned about the amount of the abatement liens that I, through my own legal work for my clients, am wiping out from properties. So I'm kind of glad to see that the number is relatively small and that the Neighborhood Services Department is very effective for the majority of its cases. But ultimately, the lien is recorded and it's a passive, it's a passive claim. And I don't know if Ms. Boland is able to talk about actual enforcement actions of these liens, if and when they are foreclosed, or if it's sort of a passive approach to waiting for an insured real estate transaction to come along and ultimately pay it off, which seems to be the approach, but I may be misinformed about that. And what I would like to suggest or volunteer for is just a study committee to look at various enforcement alternatives that might be available to the city to not lose that revenue, not lose the $4 million that's out there, realizing, of course, that it's kind of a tip-of-the-iceberg thing if most of these are getting paid off in due course. But as I mentioned, I represent property tax lien investors who are wiping these out. And it may be a temporal problem that just comes from the end of the mortgage bust from 2008 and a lot of people abandoning houses that they really couldn't keep paying the mortgages on. Or it may be an ongoing problem. But blight is such a significant problem to the people who live in the neighborhood where it occurs that I think if we can do anything that's even marginally an improvement in our system, it bears looking into. And that's what I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I agree, this is an issue, almost every time I go to a neighborhood meeting, there's a property that people point to and say, "What are you gonna do about that property? And can you help us?" And so if we perhaps could speed up the process instead of waiting for the tax lien to clear, it seems like there may be some investor interest in helping us address this problem and recover these funds. So I think that would be something we really ought to look into. We've not, I think, marketed blight liens in the past, but if there is interest and if it would help clean up the neighborhoods more quickly, I would like to see us study this. Councilwoman Pastor represents the district that is number one in these issues. So several hundred is a lot to us and our constituents. And we've tried to work hard. Councilwoman DeCecio was very involved with trying to clean up around golf courses. And this seems like a logical next step. We maybe have a single-digit number of golf courses, but hundreds of liens in this area. So appreciate your willingness to help us with that. I hope we will take you up on that offer, Councilwoman Pastor.
Go ahead. I'm not ready yet.
From my end, I think this is a great idea that Mr. Manoyle was talking about, is maybe putting a study group together to figure out a best way to do that. I mean, when you start seeing the hundreds of liens that are out there and these, you know, it's the old broken window theory. If you have a broken window in a neighborhood, it deteriorates all the homes in that area, all the properties in that area. Likewise, with the golf courses, you start seeing fences around, it creates a blight for not just that one location, but for everybody around there. Here's what I'd like to see. I mean, I don't know how many liens we've got sitting out there, but I'd like to find out what we could do to step it up, to get the payments back on that. I'd like to see what people like Mr. Manoyle do in the private sector, see if there's a private sector solution as well to help speed that up. Maybe the idea that Councilwoman Gago just floated is maybe market the liens out there to see if anybody wants to buy them and allows us to bring in revenue at the same time. Then it also creates a cost-saving. I mean, anytime we go after any property, there's a time value in there. And whether or not we could have our employees doing other things rather than marketing liens, you know, that they don't specialize in. There's always, you know, whether or not you want to specialize in something. You try to do everything, you do nothing, you know? So maybe we could refocus our energies, too, by allowing entities to go out there and find ways to market these properties or create an enforcement situation where like a credit, or not credit, but a, what is it, a bill collector would end up doing, that they might be able to force the issue faster and be able to get dollars into the city, but at the same time, turn it over to some people that specialize in those areas. I think we do a really good job at 93%, but the questions asked you is like, "How much time do we actually spend on that?" And whether there is a less expensive way of accomplishing that same goal or better and then redirecting our staff into other areas. Something to think about. I like the idea of the study committee to do that. That's the direction here. I would love to see something like that. This is definitely an untapped resource here that we ought to be looking at. And I appreciate whoever brought this forward. Was that you, Councilwoman Gago? It's a great idea. Not only that I think it brings in revenue to the budget, but it also provides us a situation where we're cleaning up these blighted properties that create the zysoar, that create the deterioration in a neighborhood. Anything like this, I think is fantastic. And thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you. And did staff want to add anything or any question, response to Mark Manoyle's comments that we should clarify or... Everyone's on the same page here.
A couple of things, Madam Chair, subcommittee members. I think it has been sort of a passive collection process when there's actually a legitimate real estate transaction is when we get paid. Because there really is a cost-benefit analysis for foreclosing on these because there's a litigation guarantee report you'd have to get and other costs involved. Of course, those costs would ultimately be recoverable, but that's the analysis you have to do. And some of them are so small that we really haven't been able to justify spending, the upfront cost for the collection. With respect to the marketing of the liens, the statute says that the city may foreclose the liens. And legally, when a lien is created by statute, which this one is, it has to be enforced according to the terms of the statute. And the statute only says that the city can foreclose. And you get, if you look at the tax lien, there's a very elaborate system or scheme for the sale of CPs and for passing those liens into the hands of private parties. That doesn't exist in statute for these abatement liens. So I'm not sure that marketing them would be possible.
May I follow up on that?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Well, you can all, why couldn't you hire an entity to be basically an agent of the city, following the guidelines of the city?
Right. And Councilman, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying the marketing in particular, the sale of the lien so that somebody else could foreclose, I think that is not allowed by law. But some other procedure to get the private sector to help the city actually foreclose would certainly be useful.
Okay. And then if you do market it, I mean, why couldn't you turn it over to an entity that would purchase those liens and be able to do it as an agent of the city? Again, even taking it a step further, is, I mean, what I want to do is I don't want to leave anything on the table just by saying no. I mean, are there ways to do that?
Madam Chair, Councilman, I think there certainly are options to explore. It is money sitting on the table.
Yeah.
I think ultimately, the city has to foreclose, but there are certainly ways we could try to work that out. Hire, possibly hire someone to do it for us, you know? But those are things that could be explored, yes.
If you don't mind, too, you know, following Councilwoman Gago's lead on that, I mean, if, I think it's a very creative idea that I haven't heard of. What I would like to do is find out how to get it done. You know, my guess is, you're right. The government has to be the one that forecloses on it in that respect on their own lien. But there are other alternatives. What I want to do is make sure that the council's fully aware of every idea that's out there. If you could do that, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, and I'm gonna follow up on this conversation. So for me, $4 million is a lot of money. And so if we just kind of open up and, as you said, as you expressed, explore all our different options so that we're able to recover some of the costs, that'd be great. I think that's what we're asking, is explore, look at all the different options. How do we partner, if it's possible to partner? And if not, why not? And which way... And which ways? And if not, what are other ways we can partner? So I think it's more of, let's exploring right now. Let's have a fruitful discussion and how we better ourselves for retrieving the $4 million. So thank you for doing that. The other concern I have is, actually, it's not a concern, it's a great comment. Mark, I was leading towards that way, so I'm glad you opened it up. And we asked for a study committee, but actually, I would like to broaden it, make it broader and look for a citizens committee that then branches out into a study committee in different areas of possibility, of board-up standards, of also looking at our blight liens and the sales of it as this constituent was talking about it. I think it's broader than that. And if we could get many different experts from our public to come in and look at these things and see how we move about. My understanding is that I can make an informal request or ask for a request from the city manager and the mayor to create a citizens committee for, or we could call it the enhancement committee, I don't know what we want to call it, but particularly in this area. So I'm going to, right now, make an informal request. And Councilwoman McGago, you and I can probably make a formal request.
Why don't you make a motion through here, and then it goes right to the council? It's probably the best, if you wanted to do that. I'm just giving you your option. I'm sorry, Councilwoman. You can make a motion.
I can make an inform, I guess what I was told was that we can make a motion, but we have to formally request it, so that's why.
Could I? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One gets desk to clarify configuration of committees.
Why couldn't the Subcommittee create or move it to the council? They can do that. Or members of the council? Can move anything forward to the council's home?
Absolutely, you can move forward a request for it. The mayor's office can appoint ad hoc committees.
Right.
We have had less formal task forces and those kind of things that have gone through as a request for council and then appointments subsequently. But usually, we've tried to coordinate those with the mayor's office. For example, human trafficking. Karen, maybe you want to speak to?
Sure. Madam Chairman, and I've spoken with the mayor since this conversation, and he would be very happy to work with you on a task force to study this issue. So we're prepared to work on that.
You know, from my end, you can do it any way you want, but I think you have the power to do that here, is what I'm telling you. Depending on how you want to handle it, it's up to you. And I'm fine with either one on my end as an individual. But you have the power to do that as a chair and members of the committee.
Okay, thank you. The other dynamic is community notification process. And for those people that live near a blight property, on how they get notified as to when somebody's going to come in the process, if they've made a complaint, at what point will somebody inspect it? Then what's the next step? And the process for me is very cumbersome. Just me with several neighborhoods going through it. And so if we can look at that and streamline it, lean it out, that'll be great. We can have a conversation about it. But these are some of the challenges that communities are facing when they have a blight home. And what seems to happen, and what seems to happen is when I go to community meetings and I start taking down all the addresses, I get calls maybe two or three weeks later saying, "Hey, I was surprised. Now I saw somebody out there, it's now boarded up, things are moving." And when these constituents have been putting requests in. And so I'm not sure how the process moves and how they get notified on where it's at in the process. So if we can look at that, it's just a safety issue for me. A safety issue around the neighborhood and how we can help and assist in this. My question also is a board-up. Do we have any board-up standards?
Yes, Chairwoman McGago, Councilwoman Pastor. There are board-up specifications that require 3/4-inch plywood right now with straps that go across and carriage bolts that go through. So there are specifications right now. We've also added in our specifications the opportunity for the plexiglass material as well. What we need to do is change the ordinance, and that's what our process will do over the order, so that we require the plexiglass after a period of time. We'll probably continue to offer the board-up process for a minimum period of time, maybe 90 days. But if several properties stay boarded up for extended period of time, and at that point, we'd want it to be plexiglass. So it doesn't have as much of an impact on the neighborhood.
Okay, so with plexiglass, will there be, if this home has been abandoned for over, say, four months, then the requirement would be for board-up using plexiglass? Or those are some of the, I'm getting into the details. But those are some of the things that I'm thinking of. I'm also heard it's only going in the front. I think we also should highly encourage that it go in the back for safety issues in the sense of if somebody's moving in and out or whatever's happening, police and fire have the ability to see what's going on in the back also. So that's just some recommendations. And I know we're going to deal with this in item 10, but the lack of fencing and what type of impact will that look like if we start to fence homes and items like that? So those are some of the things that are in my mind since Councilwoman McGago and I have the highest and we want to deter that. So thank you.
Real quickly, we will fence a property if it's a health and safety hazard immediately. You know, if there's bad things going on, a vacant house, the police department are working with us, and there's crime occurring at a particular property, we may put a fence around it. But that's a temporary measure until we can get it completely boarded up. To address the plexiglass in the front, the reason we propose the front is because it's three to four times more expensive than wood is. So we don't have that amount of budget because we have to pay for the abatement at the beginning. And then hopefully, we recover the lien. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. But the plexiglass is three to four times more expensive. So we're trying to find the right balance between being fiscally conservative with having the best impact for the neighborhood.
And while we're talking about fencing, could we go to the slide before this? I had some constituents who approached me and said they had a mobile home park or a mobile home in their community, and the occupant owner had been cooking mess and burnt down the house and that no one could find an accurate address for the owner to inform her of the need to make changes. And so you can't really see it in the picture, but it is on a major RTL street to the behind. And because the fence was blown out, the entire neighborhood, now there is access through that area, and they had concerns that people were coming in. The last time I was there, someone had left a mattress there, and so that it was attracting crime. So I actually think, even though there is not a direct hazard, that if there is a fence on a major RTL street, we really ought to look at that being something we ought to require from a health and safety perspective when we do the abatements. And also look very hard at structures that are protruding. So the picture in the upper corner had cable boxes and part of the fence between the property is still sticking up. And then we looked at it a second time and did further abatement, which I think was very helpful. But we did hear a lot from the neighbors that things sticking out of the ground were more likely to be hazards and that we ought to look at our standards in that area when we say what's health and safety, that they would like us to have a little bit of a higher standard, particularly this one, I think, has been there since 2006, if I'm correct. So some of these are quite long-term problems, and our neighbors are challenging us to do better for them.
So I want to make a motion, since I've had a conversation. I don't know if you have any. I'm going to make a motion. And it's going to have to, it's going to deal with all the four things that I was talking about. So one, the motion is to update the community notification process, to look at that, especially for people who live near the blighted properties. And with the focus on those that pose safety issues, such as this example that's right up here, and look at that. The second is to create a citizens committee and to study all the sale of blight liens and other areas of board-up, new recommendation for board-up standards, and also review some of our standards in the fencing area that have great concern to health and safety, what impact that would have within that community. And really looking at the plexiglass, the cost of it versus the plywood and the dynamics that would do for the neighborhood and beautification, really. And in the sense of deterring others to enter. So we'd like to look at that in the board-up standards. Thank you.
Second.
Wonderful. A great motion. All in favor, please? Did you have any comments?
No.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Can I have one more thing?
Wonderful, yes.
I think this is a great direction for the city to go forward on. These homes that are blighted. But as a thought moving forward, just, you know, putting my private sector hat on it too, is that when you create something that looks different from the neighborhood, you know, that's what the wood does on the homes. And then it's got to be the right plexiglass, too. It can't be the cloud that looks bad either. I mean, it has to look right. Once you create something that sticks out in a neighborhood, it then becomes the eyesore and creates the blight. And it creates people thinking differently. The whole idea is to make people think that this is fairly seamless, like that home looks no different than the other home next door to it. So as we move forward with this group, if we could keep that in mind about how we treat the properties and try our best to not make it look any differently than the other properties that are in the area, then that keeps your blight, I believe, in check, is what it does. Something to think about as we move forward.
Wonderful. Thank you all. Thank you for your hard work on behalf of our communities. This will be a good result for our residents. And they will better understand our processes, and maybe we can even improve the processes. Next up, we have item number eight, infill development and neighborhood integration. So a chance for us to make sure as our community develops and we invest more in our urban core, that we do so in a way that is consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods.
Madam Chair, Subcommittee members, that's a great introduction. Alan Stevenson and the team in the Planning and Development Department have done an outstanding job of finding ways to encourage adaptive reuse and infill and a great amount of development in some of the older areas of our city. And we've made processes easier, we've streamlined approvals, and then we've gone back and addressed other issues such as parking and that kind of thing. Today, we're really talking about when infill development occurs, how do we make sure it is compatible with the surrounding area? And we've had a group of residents come to us with ideas for processes of how to do that. And Alan and his team have worked with the community to develop some other ideas as well. And they want to present those today and talk to you about how we might go forward and address the issue of compatibility when infill development is occurring in some of these older, more established areas of the city. So I'm going to turn it over to Alan. And we also have Margaret Wilson here from the Law Department because there may be some legal questions that come up as a result of this as well. And Margaret's prepared to address them, particularly regarding review of Platts after zoning and everything has been completed.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. The city's had over 200 new residential subdivision lots created since 2013, or more coming every day. When you combine those with our successful adaptive reuse program and our Reinvent Phoenix project and redevelopment along the Light Rail line, we're seeing, as Rick noted, a lot of new residential development in what we kind of call the core city area. And as a result of that, staff has been meeting with some key neighborhood leaders, and we are proposing to do a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to develop some design guidelines that will allow professional staff to better integrate some of the new development into our existing neighborhoods. I don't want to spend too much time on this. You all know the benefits of infill development, but it essentially provides a good place to live and work. It is a national trend across the board where people are looking more at walkability, bikeability, public transportation, having more attractive neighborhoods that are based with arts and culture, having restaurants that are there. Certainly, the millennial generation has spoken clearly, and that's the type of communities they desire to see in the future. And so we're trying to position ourselves from an economic development standpoint as well as from being a good quality community to have these types of infill projects that benefit existing and new residents. The issue comes up when there is property that's already zoned. And so if there's no zoning needed, then the density and scale and the incompatible design, abrupt transition, can take place because some projects may have had multifamily zoning that was granted in the '50s or '60s, but it was only built with a single-story kind of garden-style apartment. And somebody could come in and redevelop that with a much more intensive development. The zoning would allow it, and that's where the neighborhood concerns really come into play, is that, you know, it is more intense than what was there previously. You see a couple of examples of here in our central core area here. So this is Encanto-Palmcroft, an FQ story neighborhood. It also impacts some of our ranch-style homes like in North Central, which are these pictures here, as well as some places in Arcadia as well. And so the next slide here shows some new infill development and what it looks like in a lot of places. It's typically more dense. And it is something that, from a sustainability standpoint, is a better way to grow and develop than just having development on the fringe. We're always going to have that here in Phoenix. You know, I think we're very successful at that. But as we are the center part of the city, we are going to see our suburban counterparts capture more and more of that over time. And we need to be prepared to market what skills we have within the city, which is great infill opportunities. There's a couple of options to address kind of this concerns about infill development. So one of the options that some neighborhood folks have proposed is a public notification of a plat. And so the city did do a survey of other cities. And the majority of them are like Phoenix. They don't have a notification process for Platts, other than just being on an agenda. Nine of them do have some type of public meeting where they take it primarily to a planning commission. And the planning commission just ratifies staff's approval of the plat. But there's no authority to deny a plat, and there's no appeal process for Platts. Here's a kind of a breakout of what those nine cities do. So they require that planning commission. One does have a board of appeals that hears the Platts. And then three do require a separate notice. But all the other ones, the notice is just on the agenda, which is what the city does anyways when a plat shows up on your council agendas. And then one does require a separate neighborhood meeting. So Platts are really engineered documents that are governed by the city code. They look at things like your property dimensions, your street alignment, public utility easements. They are requirements that a developer has to do in order to subdivide the land and legally sell it. Most of the design work is all done way before that. And plat is kind of the final council action that approves that project, being able to typically sell the lots. And so it is a ministerial act, you know, an administrative decision by the council. It's not a legislative act, like a lot of the rezoning applications and things you see where the council has broad discretion to deny those. In the case of a plat, if it meets 1 through 50, that staff has certified that it meets, you know, in order to put it on the agenda, it's much more difficult for the council to deny it based upon public concerns because you'll have to get down to, "Well, it didn't meet the requirements of this lot width," or something like that, in which case they can, they should have already met it because staff has certified it to be there. But if not, all they would do is fix that, you know, whatever the issue is, and then council would have to approve the plat. So a public notice part of it really creates some issues because there's no teeth to address that incompatibility concerns that are at the heart of the neighborhood issues. So here's just an overview of that public notification plat process. So it does leave a gap, too, that I want to emphasize because not everything replats. So if things come in and redevelop, and if they don't replat, then there's still no public notice for it and still could create some incompatibility concerns. One of the other things that I want to highlight related to this is that if there is a plat process that goes into effect in terms of notifying the public, staff is concerned, excuse me, is concerned that it will set up some public expectations that the city can't meet. So we'll be telling the public, "Come to a council meeting. Comment on something. We want to hear from you." But yet, this council really can't act based upon those public concerns. So it's much more appropriate to have that kind of public comment when the council has discretionary authority to take that public input into consideration and making. discretionary authority to take that public input into consideration and making decisions, as opposed to a plat-type process, which is, you know, purely administrative. What staff is proposing to do is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that will require some design review, which is done by staff as projects come through. So currently, there are design review requirements for things like projects that back up to a canal, projects that back up to the Sonoran Preserve, and require edge treatment guidelines that need to be met. There's all kinds of other things about garage scape and stuff. They're typically done in our suburban new, you know, residential subdivision. And so what staff is proposing is to add a new segment to the zoning ordinance that would address the architectural elements, garage placement, landscaping of walls, street orientation, setbacks and buffering of new projects. And where we would apply those is kind of our core city area. If you think about the standpoint of trying to make sure that you're integrating with existing neighborhoods, it's more the longstanding neighborhoods that the newer architectural styles really differ from. Out in some of the suburban areas that have developed in the last five to 10 years, the style's fairly similar, so there isn't really that need to have that additional oversight. So staff is kind of working definition-wise, is looking at McDowell to Northern and 19th Avenue to 44th Street, but that's something we'll continue to work on and revise with our neighborhood groups as we refine this whole process. We're just here to get some input from the Subcommittee on the direction we'll go. We'll continue to work through the summer here with our neighborhood group to revise the proposed text, excuse me, and then go through the village planning committees, planning commission, back to Subcommittee and full council sometime this fall. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you. We have two cards on the issue, so I thought I, or three cards on the issue, so I thought I would start and take those first, so. Gigi George.